Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Milford School Committee Meeting of July nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I would like to let the public know that we do have members of the media here this evening. If you would like a recording or information from the press being at the meeting, please reach out to any school committee member if you are so interested. We're going to start tonight's meeting with the approval of the minutes from the July nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July nineteenth meeting? Motion for Megan, and second from Jim. All in favor?
I need to abstain, just I wasn't here.
Okay, so one, two, three, four, five in favor, one abstention. Okay. Do we have anyone who has announcements, correspondence, or distributions this evening?
So, I can jump in real quick. Very exciting, I just have a few quick opening of school announcements. We're less than two weeks away, or actually two weeks away as of yesterday from the first day of school. Bus routes for the two thousand and eighteen nineteen school year available on the website. The first day of school for students in grades one through twelve is August twenty ninth. For kindergarten students, it's September sixth. And the first day of school for shining star preschool students is September fourth. And there are a number of open houses and events going on, I don't know if you want to touch on that, Chris?
Just in general, I just know, obviously, the district calendar has numerous open houses listed, so certainly, parents and family out there, just to check our website, to ensure that you attend one of the open houses. And then also, I know today was the freshman orientation day. Had the pleasure of my son going today, so he enjoyed it, as most fourteen-year-olds. He didn't have a lot of detail, so, but he did enjoy it, so we're looking forward to the first day of school.
Any other announcements? Megan?
Just saying, Jen, I had opportunity to attend one of the reading series, the summer reading series, yesterday, hosted, I guess, by Woodland at Saint Mary's, and it was a fantastic event, so I commend all the families for participating, as well as the staff and teachers who read. It was really a great experience for all the kids, so, thanks for putting that on.
Awesome.
Thank you for sharing that. Moving along, do we have any members of the audience who are here for invitation to speak tonight? If you're not on the agenda for a later agenda item? Okay. Next, I'd like to invite up Mr. Michael Tempesta, who is a familiar face to many of us around the table and many in our community. Mike was currently the leader of the Central Massachusetts Collaborative, and he's here to share a little bit of information and see where we're gonna go with you.
Thank you, Jen. It's great, great to be back here. I am excited to announce that we've had conversations with multiple schools along with four other school districts, and we recently have expanded at the Central Mass Collaborative. For those at home who don't, aren't familiar with collaboratives, collaboratives are organizations that get to, that band together with communities and have, offer special ed services at a reduced rate, and very advantageous to communities, so, at, we are, Central Mass Collaborative in Worcester is the largest, actually, the largest direct service collaborative in New England that no one really knows about. For the last, we've been around for forty-five years, and recently, in the past two, two or three years, we have expanded from our facilities from sixty thousand square feet to a hundred and eighty-four thousand square feet of brand-new, state-of-the-art, special ed, educational, twenty-first century space, so we're excited with that expansion to reach out and ask for new members, and we reached out to six and four have come on, and we're excited, not only what we can offer the communities, but also what they can offer. Been in touch with Vicki Houston, there's already, I believe, six students from Milford in our collaborative, and what we're trying to do is, by reaching out and having people come in as members, Milford would benefit from a fifteen percent reduction in those tuition rates, which would be, I believe, approximately forty-five to fifty thousand dollar savings when you come in, and also in hopes that you would come on board and we could create more programs at even greater scale and cost savings to Milford and the other communities, so. We have, I'm willing to answer any questions you might have about our programs, or whatever you would, I don't know, I didn't know a lot about collaboratives until I became the executive director of one, I was obviously principal of the high school here and then superintendent in Saugus, and a lot closer to home, still in Milford, so, going to Worcester is a lot better than going up through Route One in Saugus.
So, Joe?
Mike, is it kind of K through twelve, or is it certain grades that?
All, all the way through, we have, we have seven programs in, ranging from ages four all the way to age twenty-two, when students age out. We have, I believe this district, I think you have three students in our Thrive program, which is an autism program, near and dear to my heart, my son, autistic young man who went through, started in Milford Public Schools and was out placed, we modeled that curriculum on the New England Center for Children program, we have their curriculum, we have four former teachers, including the director from the New England Center, and it's a very, very successful program. We also have three therapeutic day schools from middle, from elementary, middle, and two separate therapeutic days programs at the high school level. We have the Fifth Recovery High School in the state of Massachusetts for students who suffer from addiction, and, and we have a Woodward Day Program for students who are long-term excluded from area high schools, so, a large variety of programs, and obviously, Worcester being the second-largest city in the Commonwealth of twenty-seven thousand students, just the sending population from Worcester alone keeps us very busy, so.
Other members with questions or comments?
I just have a question. I was just curious, Michael, approximately how many students do you currently serve? And do most students start in a public education environment and then transfer, or do they start actually, you know, at the K level?
Sure. It varies, but mo- most students are early diagnosed in, you know, elementary school, and then they kind of come on board, depending on how significant their, their issues are. We have, all told, all told right now, I think we have about seven hundred students in, yeah, seven hundred at the end of this year, with, including our Woodward Day Program students, so.
Excellent.
This is probably a question more for Kevin, but we also have the relationship with the Pike County Collaborative, and what, what's the difference between the two?
We're gonna play them off against each other. No, it basically gives us options, and really, from my perspective, you can belong to more than one collaborative as a school district. Our real only obligation is that the superintendent has to serve on the board, so it's a commitment that, if, you know, and I'm gonna recommend we move forward with the, with the collaborative, but it really, it's gonna save us a lot of money, so I think Mike said forty, he said forty-five to fifty thousand.
With your current enrollment alone, it would be forty-five. Our, and I was joking with Kevin and with the other superintendents, my, my letter sounded like a credit card ad, it really did, you know, no, a lot of collaboratives have yearly fees, we don't have yearly fee, we only have the two members, and we've never really expanded, so all, all we cared about is having, having like-minded people in the collaborative and kind of getting to a greater scale, so, that, that's what's in it for us, that, so we, we know that when people send, as I did, when I was superintendent in Saugus, we belonged to two collaboratives, and, and we would, you know, some programs for some populations, and I think the, the benefit for the district is, if you're, if you're sending one or two vans, and the transportation cost can, can be down, and particularly, some of our programs, and particularly the Thrive program, but our others are very strong as well, you can, you can, it's half the cost of a, of a private, you know, and even within that, it's very competitive amongst collaboratives. BIKO is a very strong collaborative, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be, you know, you'd still have that as well, you know?
And we place, just for the committee's information, that we place students in a variety of collaboratives, just based on programing fit, you know, meeting a student or a family's particular needs, and for me, the, I think, I think Mike outlined it, it's a benefit from a tuition perspective, as well as a transportation, because if a couple districts around here also jump on board, we can sometimes save on routes, you know, that we, that we provide anyways, if we can, and we, and we do that now, when we, when we can, depending on, you know, where the students are coming from and going to, but this would, this would provide kind of two benefits to us, and really, because there's no, there's no membership renewal fee, really, the only, the only piece is me, and is, is it five board meetings, Mike?
I think there's a few more than that.
Killing me. This is very different than what we talked about a couple months ago.
No, but, but we had, we had, I think we had seven this year. The minimum is, you have to have six, and usually, the larger, the larger the collaborative grows, there's this fear because of so many demands on superintendents, and you have to have a forum for the meetings, and you can, you can miss a couple of them, but it's, as, as in BIKO, I believe, has twenty-five or so members, some of them are, some collabors are very large, and talking to my executive director colleagues, sometimes it's hard to get everyone there on time, and sometimes that can be one of the most challenging parts, believe it or not, so.
Do you mind if I ask one more question?
Sure.
Does the collaborative offer professional development at this point, or is it mainly student-focused or?
We, we have some professional development in our space, we have a, a training center.
Okay.
Most, we were all trained in the, by the Department of Ed in the Low Income Educational Access Program, and we did a couple presentations on that, we do some trauma-informed PD with my clinical director, Dr. Grady, so, and, but we, we really, we're really more just a direct service provider, some other collaboratives, like in Northampton, CES and Western Mass, they are incredible PD providers, it, we have, we're dabbling in it only recently with a new space, you know, to be honest.
Thank you. Chris, sure.
And you're targeting professional development, also, you know, helping students, what about parents and reaching out to families, is there other programs within the collaborative that are, you know, helping educate parents through the special education process also?
So, we, we, we do, we have outreach with each program, so that they, we have, you know, open house nights, we, very parallel to a regular district, we are available to, to do other things, but we, we haven't really done much of that, we're trying to get, we're trying to have more events, so more social events, and a five K and a few other things, we have a golf tournament every year that normally actually we have next week, but we're pushing that out to the spring, so that we can, we can market it a little bit better, but not a lot per se, a, a direct, we, anyone who comes in, we, we do the tours, we, we do things like that, it's a little bit different in, in a more urban environment too, to get people out, a few more challenges there, so.
Any other questions, comments?
So, my recommendation is to both to move forward with, with the partnership with the collaborative.
Okay. Does anyone have a motion to move forward with the Central Mass Collaborative?
Make a motion.
Joe?
I'll second.
Second, second by Chris, all in favor? We're approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mike, I'm looking forward to working with you, thank you very much.
Captain will be at every meeting.
We're gonna talk later, my friends.
That's right, that's right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we have been hearing a lot about a number of new administrators who've joined the Milford Public Schools, and we know what a rigorous process you've been through in order to come here and be sitting before us tonight, so, we are thrilled to invite you up to, if you want to come take a seat up at the table, if you all want to come at the same time. Tonight, we are welcoming Mr. Eric Elmore, newly hired principal for Brookside Elementary School, Christine Ravacy Weinstein, assistant principal at Milford High School, Nadine Clifford, assistant principal at Stacy Middle School, and Cara De La Lopez, assistant principal at Woodland Elementary School. So, Dr. McIntyre, after you get ready to do your Twitter.
I'm gonna have you pose differently. So, so basically, what I'd like each of you to do, maybe we'll start with Eric and just go across, is just kind of introduce yourself, talk about your background and experience, and kind of what drew you to the Milford Public Schools, and maybe, what'd I say, forty, forty-five minutes each?
I thought you said twenty-five, but.
Why don't we go two to three minutes?
All right. Compromise.
Why don't you start, Eric?
So, my name's Eric Elmore, I'm coming to you guys from Indianapolis, and while in, in Indianapolis, I had the opportunity to work at Metropolitan School District of Pike Township for eighteen years, so I was very fortunate that I did my student teaching there, and from there, I spent nine years in the classroom, anywhere from second grade, fourth grade into fifth grade, and I also had nine years of administrative experience, five years as assistant principal, and my last four years have been as principal of Deer Run Elementary. And again, that was a school district of about twelve thousand students, but Deer Run Elementary was about seven hundred students and extremely diverse, with about fifty-one percent African-American, forty-one percent, excuse me, Hispanic, and the other eight percent anywhere from Caucasian, biracial, and Asian, so, a lot of need in that school district, and a lot of need at Deer Run by eighty percent free-reduced population, so, spent a lot of time trying to, trying to help the kids meet their needs, because we realized that, that when they got to school, education wasn't always a priority, so we, we did a lot to make sure that they had clothes on their back and food in their belly, and just make sure that they were loved and taken care of, so, and that's one of the things that really, really attracted me to Milford, is I started to look at your demographics and your population, you had a high EL population, and that's something that I believe in, and that's something that I want to serve, and also, some of the need that's in Milford, we're a Title I school, so again, there is that need, and there are students that, that need to be loved, need to be cared for, need to have their needs met, as well as help them succeed academically, so I'm thrilled to be here, I could not be happier and more happy. Personally, I, I was just amazed when I was appointed as the principal at Brookside, the, the sheer number of text messages I got from, from staff members in Milford, emails just congratulating me, wishing me good luck, offering to serve as, as resources and answering questions, I was, I was, I was floored, I've never experienced that, and it just, it felt like family, and, and that's really what I'm looking for, as you guys, as I said, I was at one school district for eighteen years, and I'm looking for that same feeling and that same place to call home, so, it, it felt wonderful to, to know that I found that.
All right, well, that was gonna be hard to beat.
So, Nadine Clifford, I'm the assistant principal for Stacy Middle School, I've been in education since two thousand and six, I started off at Oxbridge Public Schools in their middle school, working as a special educator in grades five through eight, I spent eight years there, bouncing around as liaison and working on some curriculum development, and then from there, I moved on to the Walker School in Needham, which is a social, emotional, and behavioral program for some of the most acute kids in the state, where I really spent a lot of time focusing on dealing with some of the common issues that we see even in public schools, such as anxiety and behavioral issues. About a third of our population is currently in foster care or adoption, and about a third of our population has some involvement with DCF, and about a third has, you know, close family contacts, and so that was an interesting dynamic. During that time, I went to Northeastern University and participated in their doctor program, and have received my doctor in two thousand and sixteen, which brought me to looking to be back in a public school and looking for something that was a little bit more fast-paced, looking for an environment with more students to serve, and definitely an EL population, which is not something that I had tons of experience with until now, but I'm learning a lot, and I'm learning it quickly, and I very much so enjoy being here. I've, again, been very welcoming, everyone has reached out, and it's been a very positive experience just in the last month and a half or so, and I'm very pleased to have this opportunity, thank you.
So, I'm Christine Ravacy Weinstein, so I just want to start by thanking you guys for inviting us out tonight, it's really nice to be able to, you know, meet everybody and, and have this opportunity to speak. So, I am sort of similar to Eric in that I was in the district for over ten years, I was fifteen years, I started my career in Attleboro Public Schools, and that's where I'm coming from, so I spent fifteen years there. My first eleven, I was just a classroom teacher in the science department, and then after that, my department head for those eleven years was retiring, so that position opened up, and I felt kind of this pull to, to try something different, but I knew, I wanted to do something kind of administrative, I just felt like I had a lot more to offer and to share to other teachers, and I thought it was a great opportunity, so I applied for it and I was offered that job, and so my last four years in Attleboro, I served as the content coordinator or department head in the science department. It gave me the opportunity to work on a leadership team, I took on a lot of administrative responsibilities in that role, even though I was still in the classroom for a very reduced schedule, which I think was a really powerful experience for me to get to see both sides of the table in a school, and I realized through that experience that I really loved educational leadership. I still loved teaching and being in the classroom, but I really wanted to move forward with administration, so I started an educational leadership program, I finished that, and I started looking around, and Milford was very attractive to me because the communities are very similar, so Attleboro and Milford have very similar demographics, the sizes of the school districts are also very similar, Attleboro's a little bit bigger, but not by much, so I felt like this was the perfect opportunity for me to make the leap from being a department head to a full-time administrator. Since arriving here, I couldn't be more happy, instantly, I knew that the decision was the right decision for me. This community is really special, it's really unique because there's, it's very family-oriented amongst the staff here, but also very open, and so, I have had an awesome experience with being able to get my feet wet and start working this summer, and feeling like this community is here to see everybody succeed, which is a really empowering experience, so I'm very grateful, and I feel very, very fortunate and lucky to be here, and it's been a really great experience, and Eric mentioned the word family, and I do feel like this is a really family feel for me, so I'm very excited, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, as mentioned, my name is Cara De La Lopez, and I actually have been in education since about two thousand and five, have always been in the Boston Public School District, so it's quite a change to go from such a large city where there's over a hundred and twenty schools to a smaller district, which is actually something that had originally attracted me to Milford, a smaller district where you feel like you're impacting more families and more children. I have been in pilot innovative schools, turnaround schools, where we had three years to turn our data around and move our students forward, as well as schools that serve students from kindergarten to eighth grade, and I've enjoyed every single experience that I've had in Boston, to be, to be very honest, it felt like home to support families that were English language learners, someone like myself and my family who, English was our second language, being able to relate to a lot of the families and the students that were there was actually something really important to me. So, coming to Milford and seeing the population and the demographics being similar in a smaller district felt like definitely something that I wanted to do and be able to support, and as mentioned before, since accepting, I can't, do not, I can't believe how many people know me and have thanked me and congratulated me through email or phone calls, and it's been amazing, Tim and Seth are amazing, an amazing team, and I feel blessed and lucky to be here, and I look forward to just being able to build relationship with the families and the children and continue doing the great work that's already happening here in Milford.
Well, thank you all, I'll open it up to the committee for any questions or comments.
So, all of you went through a pretty rigorous interview process, do you want to comment on the process at all and what that experience was like?
You know, coming from Indianapolis, I just assumed that that's the practice, oh, easy. So, no, I shared it with some of my peers in Indianapolis, and they, we all just scratched our heads, like, you were interviewed on TV, yes, what was that, they were all floored, but, you know, as, as we sat down and started to kind of really digest it, the fact that so many people were involved in that process, it was just, nobody was closed out of it, and it was just unique, and everybody was invited, and it was a very inclusive process, and, and that was something that I think it speaks volumes about the district, and what your expectation is and, and who you are.
I agree, I thought it was, I thought it was a very thorough but exciting experience, I thought it was nice that there was so, so much involvement, including community involvement, I feel like anybody who had questions or concerns, they know who we are, 'cause I don't think any questions went unturned, so, there was a lot of information that they gathered from us, and so I felt pretty confident that once the decision was made, that it was going to be a good fit, and I was impressed by the fact that you guys could keep us busy for ten hours. I was really impressed. It was very nice. It took a lot of work, I knew your part. Very impressive.
The process for me, as someone that's a pretty reserved person, was really intimidating, in fact, when I got the invitation to take part in that round of interviews, and I read what we would have to go through, I was like, I don't know if I can do this, but it sure makes something like tonight really easy, like, this is, like, normally, I'd have been like, oh my gosh, but I was like, psh, I had a five-hour interview in front of a TV, this is easy, but no, seriously, like, I was really happy to go through that process, I think it taught me a lot about myself, which I think is really, really important, especially in, in a role as an educational leader, because you're under a microscope, and you've gotta, you know, you've gotta be flexible and be willing to learn and take criticism and roll with it, and I, so I think the process really allowed me to see that in myself and kind of learn those lessons kind of on the fly, but I also think it speaks volumes of the district and how important these positions are to the people of this district. Again, then, the number of people that were involved in that process, the quality, the questions that we were asked, it really, through the process, by the end of it, it made you realize as the candidate, if you felt like you could, like you were fitting in, like, 'cause in an interview process, we're interviewing you as much as you're interviewing us, and given how rigorous that process was, leaving, I already felt like, yeah, this is where I want to be, and that's not really the case in other districts when, when the process isn't that rigorous, you kind of leave and you're like, I don't know, I guess it felt okay, like, but this, like, you really know when you're walking away, and so I think that's a huge benefit to the process.
Yeah, very similar, I think as an educator, it's intimidating, and, you know, you're asked to come in several times, and you're like, was the first time, not good, not good enough, not, I don't know what's going on, but as a parent, seeing in, it's just, it just shows how much everyone cares and how important this decision is, and it makes you proud to be able to serve in a community where it's just that important, that we want to meet with you, and we want families involved, and we want teachers involved, and we want the superintendent involved, which is something that is a new experience for me, so it, it actually, as an educator, intimidating, learned a lot, but as a parent, very grateful that that's the process.
Megan?
Yeah, first and foremost, welcome. We're thrilled to have you all on board, and Christine, your comment resonated with me, I believe a job is much like a college and a spouse, it has to be the right fit on both sides, and I love hearing, even within the first few weeks, you're already feeling that, and I have no doubt, and I really hope that your greatest career success happens at Milford, so, thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris? The only other thing I wanted to add was Nancy, you're here tonight, and a lot of our admin team is here during the interview process, and Eric, I think yours was on a night that it was pouring rain out, and, and many faculty members here, many parents, many administrators who really don't work at Brookside on a day-to-day basis, but they were here, and I know that was the same throughout all of the interview processes, so, I know that, you know, your perception of the involvement of people in this district and your, your new colleagues was spot on, and I think, I think you're in for a great time, and I think, on our part, it's always refreshing when you bring in new people, it's new perspectives, you each bring a really different lens to the work here in Milford, and I know, you know, you'll help all of us grow and most especially our students, so thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am like so thrilled that the four of you are here, and I, it's important for you to know that I'm a hundred percent confident in your ability to succeed, and that's why you're sitting here tonight, and I think a lot of people in the community have a lot of confidence in you, 'cause they've seen you, you know, through the physical challenges, the, you know, the whole, the whole process, but they, they got to look at you through a number of different lenses, and you are the four right people for the job, and, like, I am so excited that you're joining the leadership team, and, you know, and I have no doubt you're gonna be successful, so, I wanna, I wanna thank you for jumping on board, and just say that, like, I love to see when, like, new folks come in, kind of echoing what Jen just said, who are gonna make, I think, tremendous contributions, and I'm, I've already been impressed with each and every one of you, and just the, the brief conversations we've had and interactions, so, welcome again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, the books. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, we got a, we got a little gift for you, too.
Yes. So, being new to Milford, I'm sorry, I don't think any of you qualifies Milfordians, but maybe someday you will, but that's a long way off, but we did want to present you with some history of Milford, this is when you're not getting ready to open this school year, and that's some speech reading that you're very welcome. That's some speech reading that you're very welcome.
So our next item on the agenda is taking a look at the school committee meetings for the upcoming year and um, some proposed changes to six of the meetings. Um, still remaining all on Thursday nights, but several moving to a different Thursday night. Um, that will be for the months of September, October, January, March, April, and May. So I think what we'd be looking for is barring any discussion, which certainly we can have, is a vote to accept the new dates, um, for the upcoming year.
Just a quick question, Jen. Any concerns?
What is, yeah, I mean, February into, was it February into March? One of them, do we have like concurrent weeks? Are they still spread out? Trying to remember how.
There is a calendar in here that we can check it on.
I thought it, there was when I was checking earlier in the day, but it could be wrong.
Chris, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was just, yeah, February into March, I think it was. That was the only, I think maybe the only one where, you know, we go for, we have a span of, of, of a few weeks without a meeting and then we piggyback back-to-back. And it's, you know, being new to the committee, is that gonna be okay? Um, just as barring that, we're still able to get business done as we.
Yeah, so, yeah, so if I can, if I can answer that.
I'd like you to.
I don't think that's a problem, 'cause one thing what we'll do is we'll just balance the agendas. And what we really try to do is not have, and again, we're, sometimes we're successful and sometimes we're less successful. But we really try to balance the agendas as much as possible. In that time of year especially, there's a fair amount of business, so we can, even though it's kind of back-to-back, we can pretty much spread out with what we're talking about.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's so early in the process that we can schedule things through.
Yeah, and, and worst case, if we need to cancel a meeting, we can always do that too, if we don't have anything to talk about. I don't foresee that happening, but.
Yeah, I don't either, but again.
But I think, you know, more likely gonna balance the agendas.
Very good.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the new, um, the six changed school committee dates for the upcoming year? Megan, motion? Seconded by Jim. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is Dr. McIntyre's evaluation. And thank you, Kevin, for your patience with us as we have spent some time, um, going through everything that you shared with us and, um, gathering it all together. Um, but lo and behold, we will be reporting on this tonight. Um, what I think is important for the public to know is that all seven members of the school committee contributed to this evaluation. And our chairman, Joe Calery, who unfortunately is not able to be with us tonight, um, he compiled all of our information. He put it into one, um, final document for you. So it wasn't any one person, it was a combination of all seven of us. Um, so in Joe's absence, I'll be presenting tonight. Um, so as mandated by the Mass Department of Ed, school superintendents are evaluated on goal areas and on four critical standards. Um, ratings are assigned on the superintendent's performance in each of the standards. And during our review of this tonight, we'll discuss each standard one at a time. It's important to note that, um, Kevin, you received evaluation and performance ratings from each member and those were all combined to form what is an overall rating, um, in the document. I think it's important and a huge celebration on our part and, um, very indicative of your work in the town of Milford and with our school department, that you were rated either proficient or exemplary in every one of the standards by all members. So there was a lot of consistency, um, and a lot of great information that was shared, um, on your behalf. So, um, the other thing that's important for the public to understand is that in use of the Mass Ed evaluation guidelines, um, the rating of exemplary is rarely used. And when you see a rating of proficient, that's the rating that you would want to see of any educator who's working with your own child. Um, so that's, anything that's proficient or above is absolutely what we strive for, um, in the field of Ed in the, in the state of, state of Massachusetts. Um, so to know that you were evaluated as proficient in three areas and exemplary in one, um, is really a testament to the work that you've done for our students and for our district. Um, so what I was thinking of doing was present, um, summary of the evaluation and then open it up to the committee for additional comments, um, questions or anything that you wanted to add. Um, so in standard one, instructional leadership, um, what that standard talks about is an educational leader who promotes the learning of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. Um, Dr. McIntyre earned a rating of proficient in the standard. Some of the comments that are included in your, your evaluation, um, people talked about Dr. McIntyre has facilitated the growth of effective instruction by supporting the use of understanding by design, um, in promoting standards-based units. Um, this model is based on the premise that students learn best when outcomes and a purpose for learning are clearly stated. Um, you made student-focused classrooms a key component of the evaluation process and you've committed your central office staff to school-based walkthroughs to facilitate knowledge sharing and best practices. Um, you've helped ensure the needs, um, that the needs of our diverse learners are met with different programs that we've heard about throughout the course of the year, such as blended learning, ST math, um, and writing with colors, to just name a couple. Additional curriculum offerings, particularly at the high school level, have been noted by committee members. Um, and these continue to be expanded to serve the diverse needs of our student population. Um, hospitality, tourism, the banking program, achievement of early college designation, um, are all support for proficiency in the standard. You ensure that the school committee is apprised of the district's vision and the measures that have been taken to support the articulated goals. Dr. McIntyre regularly shares evidence of work that's occurring at the building and district level in order to meet the needs of students and to address the professional learning of staff. Um, Dr. McIntyre was credited by the committee for developing a new strategic plan for our district that's comprised of four strategic areas. Um, social-emotional learning, equity and access, growth-focused instruction, and continuous learning. Um, a committee member commented that this plan focused on the whole child, provides a blueprint for aligning district, school, and educator goals so that all members of our school community directed their efforts toward the same teaching and learning goals. And I think that we've all heard that, um, those comments in those areas numerous times over the course of the year. Um, we had a district technology plan that was implemented. Um, the deployment of Chromebooks in grades six to nine. Town meeting funding for Chromebooks for grades ten to twelve was another accomplishment. Um, and those will be rolled out this, um, fall upcoming. Um, the one-to-one digital learning initiative will enhance the educational experience by increasing accessibility, providing more personalized learning and expanding, um, resources readily available to students. The second standard, management and operations. Um, Dr. McIntyre also earned a rating of proficient in the standard. In the standard, the educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum staffing and scheduling. Some of the things that members noted were, um, a successful negotiation of new contracts with the Milford Teachers Association and the Assistant Principals Union. Um, development of a fiscally responsible budget that was aligned to the four strategic focus areas designed to move the district forward. Um, the twenty eighteen nineteen budget that was approved at town meeting supports the education of all of our students through the addition of new positions in key areas, support for the early college program, broadening of a writing program that's already demonstrated significant growth for our high school students, and additional professional development and curricular support. Dr. McIntyre has repeatedly demonstrated his commitment, as we saw tonight, to bringing the best leaders and teachers to the Milford Public Schools. Uh, we've talked about the robust search process and interview and hiring process. Um, we've had the Director of Social Emotional Learning, the members who are here, um, with us tonight, who we've all remarked at what, what kind of a remarkable pro- process they've all gone through. Um, you've imparted the importance of educator quality with your administrative team and you've also worked to strengthen the teacher induction or mentoring program. And you've also appropriately addressed situations that require improvement, as every school always is continuing to improve and, and get better. The third standard is called family and community engagement. Um, in the standard, the school leader is expected to promote the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and district. In this area, Dr. McIntyre earned a rating of exemplary. Some committee comments from this third standard. Um, Dr. McIntyre works with administrators to identify and remove barriers to families' involvement, including families whose home language is not English. Um, for example, by having his monthly superintendent updates translated into twenty-plus languages. He also supported two dozen educators in a grant-funded EL Masters Program. The district's use of social media was commented on by numerous members. Um, it brings celebration of our students academically and the arts and their athletic endeavors, um, directly into the inboxes of our families. Um, in addition, the district works to meet the needs of our continually growing EL population. This includes, includes events that have been created with a focus on cultural diversity, translation of documents and live events, and Dr. McIntyre's commitment to hire, whenever possible, candidates who are culturally and linguistically representative of our school, student population. Um, in your evidence collection, Kevin, you noted that more than seventy-five family engagement events were held over the twenty seventeen eighteen school year to welcome and engage families, share key information, provide programming on issues or interests, or to celebrate student success. Um, experts in the field of education have been brought here to the Milford Public Schools. Jessica Minahan, for example, an expert in anxiety. They've been invited to the district to present to staff and family members. Um, and our own staff members have been willing and open to create presentations for families and educationally relevant programs such as I-Learn America have been brought to the Milford families as well. Um, Dr. McIntyre has been extremely connected to the Milford community and is continually looking for new ways to extend the relationships between the district and the community. Dr. McIntyre is visible and accessible at district events and is engaging with the parent community at all levels. This allows him to have a more regular pulse on the district and also allows for an honest form of feedback on what truly may be occurring district-wide. Um, I think it's a rarity to attend an event in this district and not see Kevin there, or see Craig there, or Kathy, or, um, those of you from central office, you're very visible and that's under your leadership. The final standard, professional culture, um, states that the educational leader should promote success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. And Dr. McIntyre earned a rating of proficient in the standard. Some of the comments that committee members noted were, "One of the most important responsibilities of a school superintendent is to maintain a role as an active listener and a data-driven decision-maker." "Dr. McIntyre has continually demonstrated interest in all constituencies, in making sound decisions based in data, and in finding ways to collaborate and compromise." "Dr. McIntyre creates a safe environment where he understands that mistakes will be made and where disagreements will occur, but there will always be a way to find a fair solution." "Dr. McIntyre's ability to impart and promote a positive nurturing and inclusive environment can be seen at all levels." Student feedback, as well as third-party auditing, also supports the impact of Dr. McIntyre's vision and the effectiveness of his staff. And it can be seen and felt in the culture of the district." Again, I think we heard that here tonight from four newcomers who have just arrived and have already noted the, the positive culture here. In every, um, one of the evaluations, or at least in many of them, um, there always are things that we're highlighting as a school committee wanting to continue your attention and your focus on. Um, and I think it appears to me anyway that most of the areas that were highlighted in terms of area for continued growth are areas where I think the key is on the word continue. These are areas that have already been started and are well underway, um, but we as a committee would like to see, um, focused on moving forward. So those would include continued attention to the long-term needs of Milford Public Schools, including the work of the Long Range Educational Committee. Continued work with the administrators and educators to ensure that the high expectations that he imparts at the district level are being actively addressed within the school buildings and continued collaboration with the buildings to ensure they have what is needed to achieve specific measurable goals. Um, I think we all agree, safety and security of our staff and students is a priority. Developing a solid partnership with the newly hired Director of Social Emotional Learning will further the momentum that has started in the area of promoting kindness throughout our school district. This will include collaboration with all faculty and staff to fully understand how to best meet the social and emotional needs of all students. Uh, we must continue, as a committee and a district, under your leadership, to invest in school personnel, to provide diagnostic and counseling services, such as counselors, school psychologists, and social workers. Continued partnership with building administration and curriculum leaders to assess and address the need for instructional rigor, consistency in practice among grade levels and departments, and the challenge of balancing the need for rigor, uh, with the need for students also to have time to decompress and have times where they're not in a rigorous pressure cooker. Um, so kind of the work of the, the homework study group that was taken on in our, look at start times and things like that. A reemphasis on the critical importance of culturally proficient and proactive communication from teachers, directors, coaches, et cetera, to parents. Um, at the district level, um, I think we've noted in this evaluation, communication has been outstanding and we want to see that continue um, from this level and at the building levels, um, as well, knowing the critical importance of family partnership with the school district. So I think, you know, from our committee, on behalf of our committee, to you, Kevin, you've done a tremendous job.
Thank you.
I personally think this is an amazing evaluation and I think we're incredibly grateful for the work that you have done in another hundred and eighty school days, and I think we all know that you work far more than a hundred and eighty school days, um, on behalf of our students and families.
I appreciate that.
So thank you.
Thank you.
So after that very long-winded summary of our work, and I promise you that was consolidated, um, I'll open it up to the committee for further comments, questions. Joe?
So, yeah, hey, you did an unbelievable job summarizing the, the evaluation. There isn't too much more that I can, I can add to that. Um, the one, one thing I, I will say is obviously e- each of us worked on this evaluation independently and reading through this for the first time and seeing the consistency in the responses, I th- I thought spoke volumes. Um, not only about, um, Kevin, uh, you know, about the, the communication and, um, you know, this was your second year as a superintendent. And to, to Jen's point, you def- definitely demonstrated additional growth this year and we're very fortunate to have you leading, leading the district. So I'm looking forward to seeing what, what you and, and the team that you've built around you can continue to do for the district moving forward.
Thank you.
Megan?
To comment, certainly I provided feedback, Kevin, but with such a short tenure, I almost feel like it's unfair. Um, but I guess what I would say is certainly my tenure is short, so is yours. And to think about the strategic direction and the work product and the culture that's been created in that short of time, I can't wait to see what happens in the next two to four years, so I'm excited by it.
Thank you.
Jen?
What can I say? Um, so that hasn't already been said, actually, but we've, we've talked about this a number of times. So I, I, I couldn't agree more with, um, the, the, um, you know, the feedback of the committee. I mean, the vision, the roadmap, the execution, the culture, I mean, I could go on and on. So, I mean, I, I can't thank you enough, you know, for your efforts, um, and your leadership. And I look forward to what we're gonna be doing moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you. Um, again, like Megan Laura, you know, it's, uh, been a short tenure for us, um, but certainly have learned a lot from speaking with you, um, you know, and learning about Milford Schools and what, you know, what your vision of the school is and where you, you know, plan to take us. So, you know, looking forward to, uh, you know, more years of, of your leadership. Um, I think, you know, we, we saw with the, the new administrators that are here.
I think they're great.
Exactly, so, um, you know, certainly, you know, things from the community-wise are just looking better and better, you know. So, uh, you know, there's new leadership, there's leadership that is under you that's gonna, you know, working with, uh, all the children of this community. So, uh, you know, looking forward to it and, uh, you know, we'll work on the proficiency to, uh, exemplary through everything, so.
Great, thank you.
Be great.
Um, I just want to say thank you on behalf of our students in Milford and our teachers and families. Um, I've certainly, um, enjoyed getting to know you more in the process and think you've done an outstanding job. So thank you from our community and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
So with that, um, I think, do we take a vote to approve the evaluation? Or, I'm looking at you, Joe. Um, we can, we can, we can vote to accept it.
I think we can take it.
Yeah.
On the overall summit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, um, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's evaluation as written and presented to Dr. McIntyre with an overall, um, rating of proficient, with three proficient areas and one exemplary? Jim? Motion by Jim, seconded by Joe. All in favor? Okay. Um, the next thing that we will need to do is to set up an executive session for, um, hopefully our next meeting, the first meeting in September, um, to discuss the details of Dr. McIntyre's contract and how we're going to. um, to discuss the details of Dr. McIntyre's contract and how we're going to, um, look at that and possibly adjust it for the upcoming school year. So, do we need to vote on that, or, oh, Megan, do you have a question? Yes.
No. I was just curious, so obviously now this sort of culminates a year, then at the next meeting, do we start talking about goals for the next year? I'm just curious the timing of how that works.
Yes, we probably do. We can kind of, we'll kind of map that out, like, I'll map that out with Joe in terms of like this, the structure, but we'll do like a review of the strategic plan measures in the meeting, goal setting.
Okay.
And then, and there'll be kind of some interim steps too, but it'll probably be like September, October, in that range, depending on what else is kind of on the agenda and gonna get shifted around.
Thanks, sir. And then as we think about the agenda, Kevin, I'd love to see us put this on even a little sooner next year, because in my opinion, you're owed this at the time we culminate the school year and I, I feel bad that you didn't get it at that time. So I'd love to see us be more proactive with delivering it timely in the.
Yeah, we can try to kind of up the timeline on that. We always, we, it's always the best.
And it's a turnover, so like, yeah, it's helpful to have it kind of knowing that it's coming.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jim?
If you wouldn't mind, Jen, um, could we add, uh, when we put that executive session together, I'd like to see if we could also discuss not only Dr. McIntyre's contract, but also administrator contracts in general.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just a few components surrounding that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I say three things before we?
You can say four things if you want.
I think we've got three. Um, I, I think it's, it's important, I appreciate all the kind words. I really, I really do. Um, and it's, um, I, I've said this a bunch of times, but I feel like I have the, the best job in the world. Every day I come in and I think like I'm excited to be here, it's engaging, the work is fantastic, I work with a tremendous group of people. The school committee, I think, is fantastic. I think we're all, um, both as a, as a district and as a committee, we're rolling in the same direction, which I think is critically important, 'cause I think you're gonna see kind of, you know, more growth, more learning, more improvement take place, 'cause we're really focusing on the important things and the right things. Um, you know, and I, and I want to thank the broader team, 'cause I think this is, this evaluation kind of speaks to the whole leadership team and the whole Milford Public Schools team, because, you know, Craig's got, Craig completely, um, revised the, um, the mentoring process. I was in charge of it before and I think it was okay. He's turned it into something fantastic. Um, and next, next week, they're gonna go through a two-day process. And it's, and he's, he shifted a program that's been one year to a three-year program. It's really driving home a lot of the things that we feel that every educator in the Milford Public School should be engaging with and thinking about. And I think like, a- again, I think it's a credit to Craig, and I could talk about, you know, Matt Joseph and the rollout of the Chromebooks, Kathy and the budget process, um, you know, Lucy managing, you know, a very complex special education system. Jen Norgianian kind of driving, you know, a, a population in Milford, EL population that has exploded in the last five years and really, really successfully kind of managing growth and, and moving students from level one to level five. And, you know, I'm excited Lisa Kincaid's coming on board as an SCL Director. I think that speaks volumes to this group, because we were all able to work together to get that through the budget process. And I think, you know, she's, she's got this ambitious, unbelievably ambitious list of things that she wants to accomplish that I think are gonna be tremendously beneficial, um, to the students at Milford and to the culture of the schools. Um, so it's really a team effort, and I think that's, that's critically important to say. And, you know, I'm, I'm at a point now where I feel like, you know, we've got a lot of the right pieces on the chessboard and now we've really gotta move forward and, um, you know, part, part of the thing is like, we wanna create a culture of kind of constant improvement and continuous learning, and I think we're getting there. We're seeing, um, we had fifty, fifty teachers take a Saturday and a Sunday and go to ASCD on their own time. And we, we made the offer, but they all accepted it. And, you know, Craig could talk about how much, like, people have made these connections, that they're talking to educators all over the country and the world, and they're bringing the practices into the classrooms here in Milford. Um, you know, the, the, you mentioned the Framingham class. We had twenty teachers sign up for this Framingham Masters Program that, part of the program is they're giving back professional development to the district, is kind of part of the deal for the free Masters Program. And it's just, it's just awesome. Um, so the goal is to kind of continue to build that culture where people are, everybody's walking in excited to be here. And we always use the phrase that we don't want people running out the door at the end of the day, we want them running in in the morning. And we're, we're really getting there. And, you know, we want more engaging practices in classrooms. And we're pushing that through, you know, project lead the way, we've expanded those courses up to the high school, and I think there's some exciting things happening. We made this partnership with MCIA where we're really trying to drive engaging curriculum, where kids are gonna be involved in like projects and, and really focused on things they're passionate about. And I think that's gonna make school more exciting for kids, and I think we're trying to really move away. We're always gonna have our eye on the MCAS prize, because I think that really sets like, that kind of, that gives us some information about where kids are in terms of, you know, skills in math, science, and, um, and, and, and literacy. But I, I don't think that's really the end game that we should be, we should be pushing for. We really want kids to be excited about coming to school, excited about learning, becoming problem solvers, and really preparing them for that next step, because we don't want kids to go off to college and, you know, and my son is going to school next week, he's going to, he's going to college. And I, I worry because there's been such an emphasis on like standardized testing and, um, and kind of preparing for the test that college is such a different experience, or if you go to a job, I don't think any of you get thrown, like a standardized test gets thrown in front of you and say, "Answer these five questions and get on my desk by tomorrow." It just doesn't happen. You have to become, you know, complex problem solvers, you have to be able to work with other people as part of a team. And those are the kind of skills we really wanna build. We want those academic skills, 'cause those are the foundational skills. But we also want those soft skills where people can kind of work in any environment or any situation and they're able to be successful. And that's really what we want for every student. And we've got thousands of students in the district and they all have different dreams. We wanna get them there, and that's really our goal. Um, and I just look forward to kind of the coming year, 'cause, you know, the new year is always exciting. It's like, it's, it's kind of a cool thing. It's almost like athletics in a sense, because we have the next season coming up. And we're, you know, we're prepping for the next season, we had our leadership retreat, and everybody's really pumped and excited. I, I see teachers in the hallway and there's a kind of a skip in everybody's step, which is kind of nice and it's, it's kind of refreshing. So I'm really excited for the next school year. So I wanna thank everybody, I appreciate the feedback, and I look forward to kind of, you know, continuing to engage in the work, 'cause it's, it's critically important. So that's my, that might have been one of the three things.
Well, thank you. No, that was very appropriate, so.
So thank you.
And I think that's the passion, that's the passion that we see in the Milford Public School, so thank you for bringing that to us. All right, um, so we now have the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources. Um, the role of Kathy Perry will be played by Craig Consigli this evening. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have eleven warrants to be approved today.
Um, the first warrant is in the amount of three thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Do we have a motion? Jim, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
A second warrant in the amount of five thousand seventy-four dollars and three cents.
Motion by Megan, seconded by Chris. All in favor?
A third warrant in the amount of two hundred twenty-one thousand fifty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Laura. All in favor?
Fourth warrant in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Fifth warrant in the amount of four thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Sixth warrant in the amount of seven thousand three hundred forty-six dollars and eight cents.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Laura. All in favor?
Seventh warrant in the amount of eight thousand twenty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Megan. All in favor?
The eighth warrant in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-two cents.
Motion by Megan, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Ninth warrant in the amount of two hundred sixteen thousand two hundred twelve dollars and eighty-four cents.
Motion by Laura, seconded by Chris. All in favor?
A tenth warrant in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred one dollar and eighty-two cents.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Megan. All in favor?
And the eleventh warrant in the amount of three hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is future agenda items. Does anyone have anything they would like to add? So I'm sure between you and Mr. Joe Calery, he will fill that up for us.
We'll have the, we'll have the, we'll have the fall agenda ready to go.
Um, I'm sure we'll have a report on the opening of school, right?
Absolutely.
Probably the next one, yeah.
And, and to that point, um, we moved away from having school committee members go on the first day, just because it's so busy and, and a little, chaotic's the wrong word, but it's just, there's a lot that the principals have to kind of focus on and make sure every student is in the right classroom and everybody's kind of getting what they need, that we, um, we'll do the same thing we did last year, we'll offer like two, three, or four dates where, um, we'll just throw it out to the committee, probably in early September, where if committee members are available, they can tour a couple of the schools with us and get a kind of a sense of what's, what's happening.
Mm-hmm. All right. Any old business that we need to revisit? Okay, no old business. Um, I believe we do not have an executive session tonight, so seeing that there is none, do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Motion from Jim? Seconded by Chris. All in favor of adjournment? All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.